Good morning, everybody, and welcome in. This is day number three. Meet the candidates for 2017. We're in Q 96.5 FM. And I have the candidates today for the Board of Education. We have Emily Ebon and Deb Updike, Mike Stockman, Ryan Miller, and my good buddy Scott Benedict, who looks really nice in a suit today. I gotta say. I think that was part of the requirement today was because the Board of Education oftentimes do show up well dressed at meetings in suits. And they kinda had to see whether Scotty could pull that one off today. So, there you go. Done good, Scott. Looks good. Welcome, everybody that's here. This is day three, and it has been a good first two days. I think we've gotten a lot of things accomplished. And as we always do, we open everything up with Dan Yaros from the Bryan Chamber of Commerce.
Well, thank you, Jim. And again, thanks to 96.5 for doing this. Thanks to the Bryan Times for this, also being a part of it. I just want to remind everyone that this is the last of our three, but these are all being replayed on the BMU Channel 3 at some point. You can check that out, or you can check out the link on their Facebook page, Bryan Municipal Utilities. And we thank Eric and his crew for being here also. Just another reminder that early voting has started, so you can get out there and vote now. I won't say get out and vote, and vote often, but do vote. And we hope everybody will turn out on the polls on the 7th of November. And again, thanks to you guys, and thanks to you all for running for the school board positions. We really appreciate your efforts and your integrity to do that.
And our, Dan, thank you for being here and helping us organize and get everything going, as always. We appreciate the Chamber and all their participation. And I'll tell you, I've gotta say a big thank you before I forget that to the guy to my right, because Ron Osborne, without him, we wouldn't be able to pull this together. So, thank you very much for being here as well.
Good, thank you. That's a lot to do with it.
Well, we have a lot of fun. We get to make this work, and I think it's been a good situation. Hopefully, people have learned some things as we've been going. And again, thank you to all the crowd that's been showing up as well. Our broadcast today on 96.5 is being brought to you by Andre's O'Neil &amp; Low, AmeriMade Realty, The Main Stops of Northwest Ohio, Napa Auto Parts, J&amp;M Heating &amp; Cooling, D&amp;M Service Center. And of course, we couldn't do this without Eric and KB over there for Bryan Municipal Utilities, who have accommodated our stream and made everything work for us here as we go through this whole thing. With that, basically, what we'll do today is we'll have a couple different segments. We have some questions prepared. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to ask a question, please get with Dan. There are forums here that you can fill out. We had one person yesterday who didn't realize that we had that, and I don't want anybody to not be able to ask a question today if you'd like to do that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ron. Ron, why don't you start with the questions?
Jim, why don't we have the candidates introduce themselves first?
Three days, day number three. Emily, why don't we start on your end, and let's give each person a couple of minutes just to let them know who you are and a little history about you. How's that?
Okay, thank you. Is this on? We're good? Okay. I'm Emily Ebon. I'm just completing my 16th year on the Bryan City Board of Education. I have four children, who are all Bryan High School graduates, and now my grandchildren are beginning that process. So, I've been a field revenue officer for the Internal Revenue Service for 35 years. I've served as Treasurer of the Bryan Music Boosters, Bryan Girl Softball. I've been active in the Bryan Rotary. I'm currently active in Bryan Area Foundation and First Lutheran Church. The reason I'm running is I just have a passion for kids, and most, all the things that I'm involved in are involving children and seeing that they can reach their potential.
Thank you again. Thanks, Dan, for coordinating all this in the Chamber. Ron and Jim, thank you for hosting and organizing this as well. Ryan Miller, I'm completing my fourth year on the Board of Education. I am 1996 graduate of Bryan High School. Moved back to Bryan about 10 years ago through Dan and Leadership Williams County, and that wonderful experience decided I needed to be, while I'm active in many charities and other functions in my church, wanted to give back to the community a little bit. Got involved in school board four years ago. It's been a really rewarding experience. It's been challenging, no doubt, but feel like with school-aged children, I have a 4th grade child and an 8th grade child, a wife who graduated from Bryan as well, a mother who taught for Bryan City Schools. I felt like this was something that was near and dear to myself and my family. Felt like being involved in the school district was a great opportunity to have an impact on our community. I've really enjoyed the four years I've served, and hopefully, if the community will have me, I'll get to serve four more years. So, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Scott Benedict, and I'd also like to thank Dan, the Chamber, and Bryan Times, and Jim with QCT for hosting these forums. I was born and raised here in Bryan, Ohio. I'm a 1981 graduate of Bryan High School. I then attended Michigan State University and got my bachelor's degree in political science. I moved back here in 1989 to begin transitioning, taking over the family business with my brother, Greg. I'm married to my wife Pam Benedict. We have a daughter Quincy, who's currently a senior at Bryan High School. I have a stepdaughter Casey, who's Vice President, First Federal. I have a stepson Tyson, who's the Director of the Bryan Streets Department. And I have five grandchildren, one who's already graduated from Bryan High School, and I have three that are in the 5th grade currently. Triplets, boys. I've been involved in the Bryan community for a long time. I've worked back in the mid-2000s with DBI and the Bryan Chamber of Commerce and the city. We were able to establish the criteria and credentials to allow us to apply for a $400,000 Community Development Block Grant, which the city did receive for downtown beautification. I've been a member of the Bryan Rotary Club for 28 years. I served on its Board of Directors and eventually served as its 64th President during the Rotary International's 100th Centennial Anniversary Year. That year, we were in charge of a community project, which we then coordinated with Rotarians, and we built the Rotary Pavilion that's now in Garver Park. One of the things I'm most proud of is that this will be my 20th consecutive year of volunteering in the Bryan City Schools. I've worked with kindergarten through 4th grade students to help them with their reading and comprehension skills. So, that's a little bit of my background. I think that I'm running for the school board. I just think that with my business background, I've run a successful business now for more than 25 years. I've lived in Bryan all my life, except for my college years, and I have a good sense of the community, the people, and the school district. I've said before, I've served on multiple boards, and I understand the process of working together, listening to each other, to reach a consensus and accomplish common goals. I think my organizational skills and attention to detail help me stay focused on tasks at hand, and I think my wife will tell you, some will say I'm not, but I think I'm a very good listener. I do take people's comments and concerns to heart, and I think that I'm a very good decision-maker and a very pragmatic problem solver. So, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Deb Updike. I've been a resident of Bryan since 1984. My husband, John, and I made the decision at that time to come to Bryan to provide for our children an experience like we had had as far as John's hometown being Bryan and just having that small community feel. And for me, it was an opportunity to come back to a more rural setting, similar to where I grew up in Wood County. I came, we've supported our children, they're all graduates of Bryan High School enthusiastically in sports and also in the arts. They were able to be inspired and achieve due to great teachers and coaches and lots of support there. We currently have two grandsons, who are in the Bryan City School District, 4th grader Cooper and a kindergartner, Colby. And we're very pleased to be able to have them here with us in Bryan. A little bit of my professional background, I am a licensed speech and language pathologist. I have worked in the schools my entire career as a speech-language pathologist. I finished 35 years of full-time employment with Bryan City Schools in the year 2013, and since that time, I've continued to work in various school districts in Northwest Ohio as a speech-language pathologist. I feel that with my skills in working with educators and also with working with children and their families, brings to me some skills that I can use. As far as the decision to run, I did make that decision to run because I feel that the perspective of an educator would be an asset to the board. Yes, schools can be viewed as a business, but I feel that it's vital that we keep that business as a student-centered view. Serving on the school board is a way for me to give back to the school district and the community that's provided our children with that high-quality education, and also a district that I was always very proud to work for, and a district that never, ever gives up on kids.
Hi, I'm Mike Stockman. Born and raised here in Bryan. Ran a business for over 40 years here in Bryan. And I'm married to Juliette with two children. Negley's a senior at Bryan High School. Madison is a sophomore at Toledo University. And Bryan's been a very good community to me, and I just thought it was time for me to give back to the community. They've been very good to me.
Good. I'm Ron Osborne with the Bryan Times. First of all, I salute you guys for your willingness to serve and also for being here at the forum. I appreciate it. We appreciate it. It's a great way for the community to get to know you guys better. So, thanks for your participation. Each of you have or have had children in Bryan City Schools. For the incumbents, how has that informed or affected the decisions that you make in the past on the board and going forward? And for the first-time candidates, how has that affected your decision to run for the board?
Down the line?
Yes.
Well, I would say that having children in the Bryan City Schools certainly makes you more passionate to make sure that things are going well, that things are, that students are being educated in a way that's going to be beneficial to them. Sometimes, when your child comes home and has a question or concern, you have to decide if you need to wear your parent hat at that moment or your school board hat. Because some issues that you would deal with as a parent, you deal with differently as an objective school board member. So, I would say you certainly get a different perspective when you have children in the district. And again, my children have all grown up through Bryan City Schools, so I've had, you know, the pleasure of meeting many of our dedicated staff, from our teachers to bus drivers to custodians, who interact with the children on a daily basis. And just having that opportunity during open houses or during any times that you're interacting with the staff gives you a unique perspective to see what's going really well. And sometimes, it allows you to see something that's not working so well, and as a board member, you have the ability to maybe impact that or to ask some questions about how can we do this better. So, I would say that's my perspective.
Thanks, Emily. And to Emily's point, the hard part is, honestly, Ron, is juggling that influence that you don't, you know, you have to be a school board member and not a parent. There's a time for each, and that's hard sometimes. The reality is, I don't have one child in the school district. I have 2,100 or so children in the school district that I'm responsible for as a school board member, because each child that we have in our school district deserves the best that we can give them, not just my child. And so, as you look through those opportunities, you have to decide, are we making a good decision for everyone and not just my specific child? And some of those decisions, you ever go to lunch with a group of people, and does everybody in that group of people order the same meal? Usually, that's not true. So, the reality is, there are different things for different children, and so you're making a decision to make the best decision you can for all 2,100 children, not just that one person. And so, that's the hard part to juggle with it. So, it's given me that perspective of having to make sure that I make good decisions to impact everybody.
You know, I don't know that having a student in the school or even grandchildren in the school had an influence on me running for the board. I just think that our school system is in really good shape right now, and I thought, you know, I might be able to help out and continue with, you know, what's happening in the system right now with the new buildings, the new technology, trying to advance those programs and the curriculum. So, I thought, when I was asked if I would consider running for the board, I didn't really consider it from the fact that I had a daughter who's a senior. I just thought it was maybe the right thing to do, and maybe I could help out the community.
Well, for me, having worked the entire career in education and now thinking about what that means as a board member, it is something that carries with it, some heavy decision-making, some time to reflect and think about, not just my experiences, but also what are some of the activities or things that are going on in our schools? And as has already been mentioned, you know, looking at what are some things that may need to have more resources put behind them, or perhaps supports that are needed, just having an opportunity to interact with students, not only within the building, but at sporting events and other places, I think is a good perspective and something that I would hope to bring.
I would like to just see all our children in the community, you know, have a good education, and just try to help the community out, I guess, is why I'm trying to serve as a board member.
Okay. Hang on to the mic there, Mike, real quick. I think everybody, and one of the questions, obviously, in the room, and I'm sorry, I don't have my mic, so I'm the one that's gotta pick up mine. I'm having a bad, tough day. Thank goodness you guys are here, man. You know, I didn't have a Bryan education, just for everybody's understanding. I came from Troy, and I'm still trying to work my way through this. How's that? You know, Mike, your whole situation, I think everybody in this room understands that you and your family have been involved in a bit of a situation with the school board for a while. First of all, did that have anything to do with your decision to run? Do you think it's going to affect your ability to do your job if indeed you are elected? And then, as we go down the line, I think I'd like to also, you know, get the feel from everybody else whether they feel like this is, you know, if Mike gets the job, are we gonna be able to work and sit down and do what we all hope we're gonna do?
Yeah, I don't think that that's an issue at all. That's totally not the reason why I'm here, and I just want to help the schools and the community out, and I don't think that's really an issue.
Okay.
I do feel that ethics are a very important thing that we do, that we each live daily. I recognize the fact that should I be elected to this board, my behaviors, my attitude will be a reflection of this district, and I believe that we need to always keep in mind those ethics and what we stand for. For me, it's not a gray area. It's pretty black and white. And as far as working with everyone here, I feel that with a board, everybody brings different experiences. Everyone brings some different perspectives. But I do believe that to be a good board member, I need to think about what those perspectives are, what are those differing point of views, be ready to ask questions for clarification and to gain facts. So, I think that's what I have for that.
I can work with anybody, Jim. I'm done. I have, I think that the, working with people is something that I do a very good job at, listening to people. I think what we're looking at now is continuing to improve the Bryan City School system, the district move forward. We've got a bright, bright future ahead of us. We've got some fantastic new buildings, got excellent teachers, and I think that moving into this 21st century learning is just gonna be a very positive thing for our students and our community and the parents. So, I think that we need to look to the future. Thank you.
You know, to say that the last four years haven't been a challenge, that would be a false statement. They've certainly been a challenge from many aspects and many things that I, as an individual, have taken very seriously. And there's a lot of discussion, information, decisions that are made, consultations that are done to make sure that we make good decisions. The board definitely, to a person, brings different traits that are awesome, that are absolutely awesome. And everyone who's willing to give back has a very noble cause. I've gotten to spend the last four years working with Emily, Glenn, Tom, and Syndra, and it's been a great four years. And we're gonna get at least one, if not three, new board members this year, and everyone's gonna get the chance to work with new people and with a noble purpose of making sure that at the end of the day, we take the assets that the community bestows on us and give each one of those students the best that we can give them. And at the end of the day, while that sounds simplified and simplistic, that's what our goal really should be and what our goal is. And I know each one of the people up here will do that, so the ability to work with them isn't an issue to me, because we have to have a mission to do the best we can for each one of those kids.
Thank you. I would say, looking at the slate of candidates that we have, Bryan City Schools is gonna be in good hands, no matter who's elected, because I think everybody sitting at this table has the best interest of the district and their students at heart. It has, as Ryan alluded to, been a tough couple of years. And one of the things that I've looked at as we've gone through the process, we look at our policy. How is our policy structured to address these situations? If we're in a tough situation, what can we learn from this? What can we do better? What can we do to prevent difficulties? When you're dealing with people, you're always gonna have some hiccups. People make mistakes. People do things that are not what you would like them to do. And as a board, your responsibility is to address that, okay? How do we address that in this situation, and how do we look forward to making sure that we're not in the same situation going forward? So, again, I think Bryan City Schools is gonna be in good hand, no matter who gets elected. So, thank you.
Thanks. We'll just stay with you, Emily, and work our way back down the line. In reference to the incident that Jim mentioned with Mr. Stockman's family and the school board, do you agree that the school administration needs to do a better job of communicating with you guys, with the Department of Job and Family Services, and with law enforcement on possible cases of abuse, neglect, or illegal activity? And could I ask also, when you look back on that with you and Ryan, would you address whether you feel like it was handled well? Did you get all the information you needed? Would you have done anything differently?
Certainly, you can look back and say, well, I wish this would have been handled differently. Again, as I said, what we look at is, what are our policies in place? What went well? What do we need to improve on? And one of the things that we did after this particular incident, we looked at, what is our communication? What is our training for our staff? Do they know what's expected of them? Do they know what the law says, what their requirements are? And we provided training to all the staff as a result of that, and we've had internal discussions about how do we improve the communication? We want to make sure that no students are harmed ever in our schools, obviously. So, we want to make sure that our staff knows what is required of them. We want to know, we want to make sure that parents know what's required of them, and we, as a board, need to make sure that we're holding people accountable when there's issues that need to be addressed. So, we've, you know, we look at it from a perspective of policy. We look at it from a perspective of education going forward and improving communication on all of those lines.
Ron, you asked, do I agree that communication needed to, could you reword, could you, I guess my question, ask that question again for me?
And like the incident that we referenced with Mr. Stockman and his family, do you agree that the school administration and school board need to do a better job, the school administration needs to do a better job of communicating with you guys, with the school board, with Job and Family Services, with law enforcement in cases of possible abuse, neglect, or illegal activity? Do you feel like the communication was adequate from the administration for you? And when you look back, would you do anything differently?
First of all, just to point a clarification, it actually wasn't on the board. The incident happened prior to my service on the board. So, to discuss the communication as it happened, when the incident happened, wouldn't be fair for me to say. What I can say is, communication is an ever-evolving process. Could we do better? Certainly. But it's not because I think we do a poor job now. To be fair, I get about five text messages, emails, phone calls, et cetera, a week on things that are going on in the school district relative to my children and other children. To be fair, communication is an interesting and tricky subject. One of the things that was brought up at a school board conference I attended a couple years ago was technology, and I've got my iPhone with a bunch of data and information on it right here. And the reality is, the iPhone's about eight or nine years old right now. When you think about the instantaneous nature of communication as it exists today and the evolution of it, you know, you sit there and say, can you do a better job? Well, yeah. But communication's changing. I mean, how people communicate? My son communicates with text messages and Instagram and all those things to talk to other people, talk to his friends, talk to his parents about what's going on. I didn't grow up that way. I either, you know, it was when the streetlights come on, you go home. That's what you do. And that was the communication. You picked up the phone and you dialed the rotary dial system. So, yeah, I mean, can we do a better job? Sure, but it's a learning process. We're learning, just like everyone else is, how to communicate, what to communicate, and to do a better job communicating in every manner.
Guys, when you start to answer, I forgot about radio. My very good producer back there said, give your name and then the answer, so people on the radio can understand who we are. Eric Herman's a sharp guy. He did go to Bryan Schools.
Way to go, Eric. Yeah, this is Scott Benedict, and also, it would be very difficult for me to talk about, you know, communication from an incident that I was not involved with. But do we need to communicate? Certainly with the, you know, if it's any law enforcement, Job and Family Services, whatever the, I think you're gonna have to take it on a case-by-case situation when those things arise. But certainly, you're gonna want to follow protocol, and if the policies need to be looked at, then that's what the school board should do. But I think right now that they're doing everything that they can when those situations arise. But I had a meeting yesterday, actually, with Superintendent Savage, and we talked a lot about communication, and I think one of the things that's imperative is not only communication with those agencies, but it's communication with the community. I think that we need to do, I don't know that we do a bad job, but I think the school board can do maybe a little bit better job communicating both the positives and the negatives to the community. Get out in front of things, tell them that, you know, the positives that are happening in our school district. Communication is, I think, key for parents, teachers, and our community as a whole. It's one of the biggest things that links us from the school board standpoint. We are the link to the community. So, I think communication is very, very important.
Deb Updike, yes, I won't comment on anything that happened in the past. I was not on the board. I believe we need to recognize that with any communication, be it with Job and Family Services, be it with law enforcement, be it board communication, there are some things that are confidential. And while we strive to be transparent, to communicate all we can correctly, at the same time, I think we need to remember that level of confidentiality and to be able to be trusted with that. I'm very happy to hear that Emily shared that there's ongoing communication with school employees about what is expected, what is expected, not only at school, but outside of school as well. That's very important to do that. And communication, I'm a communicator. It is a listening process. It's an asking-question process. It really never ends, and I say about many things I do, communication, if it breaks down, it's a problem. It's a problem for everybody that's involved. So, just always being aware of what's going on, being that listener, being ready to respond when it's a hard question and a hard situation. That's all.
Mike Stockman, and, yeah, I agree with Scott about the communication, and I think maybe our community would like to see, you know, maybe the board communicate better with the community possibly, and, you know, I know it's hard to always, as a board, you can't, you know, communicate everything to the community, so that's it.
Okay. You were at the heart of it. Were you relatively happy with communication as that all went through, Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, I think that's important to know as well. Sure, go right ahead, please.
And, you know, I just think we need to move forward from, you know, this point on and... on and-
I do, too. You know, it's not, everybody thinks it's so easy to be on a school board or be on the BPA or the council, and they've got it made. And it really isn't. All of a sudden, you might be moving right along and everything's smooth sailing, and we build brand-new buildings, and we have wonderful things going on. But every now and then, there's always a bump, okay? And it's how we deal with that bump, I think, that's so critical. And so I guess that was a good topic of conversation we start. With that, if I'm going to get bumped if I don't walk away from here and play some commercials, because we are on the radio, how's that? We have the 2017 Meet the Candidates Board of Education members here today. You're on Q96.5 FM. It's all being brought to you by the Bryan Chamber of Commerce, the Bryan Times, Andre's O'Neil &amp; Low, AmeriMade Realty, Main Stops of Northwest Ohio, Napa Auto Parts, Jay's Heating and Cooling, D&amp;M Service Center, and also our folks over at Bryan Municipal Utilities. With that, we'll be back after this.
Looking for career opportunities? They're closer than you think. Northwest State has more than 70 degree and certificate programs, so you can start on the path to a rewarding career. Or transfer your credits toward a bachelor's degree. Your future is knocking. What are you waiting for? Opportunities await at Northwest State Community College. Find out more at northweststate.edu.
They say there is strength in numbers. In Bryan, we have always taken pride in supporting our Golden Bear student-athletes in all of their sporting endeavors. The Bryan Athletic Boosters now have a chance for you to get into the game. If you're Bryan proud, it's time to become Bryan strong. Whether you were a BHS athlete, are raising a BHS athlete, or just love supporting our Bryan High School athlete, this is your chance to be part of the BHS sporting community. Talk to any board member today on how easy it is to join, or contact us at (419) 636-4536. As the baby boomer generation tires of traditional send-offs, funerals are becoming increasingly more personalized. People are pre-planning their own remembrance gathering. Pre-planning is easy and will pay off both emotionally and financially for you and your family. Plus allows you more control over your last hurrah. At Krill Funeral Service, we're not just funeral directors. We are experts at helping hearts heal.
You know, gathering with those we love, we get to catch up and we get to reflect on the past.
It seems like every time we get together, I always learn something new.
Here's the front page of the Columbus Dispatch, winning one state baseball tournament, sliding into home plate.
Look at that, the front page. And that's a neat picture.
That was a great memory. I'll never forget that.
At Oberlin Turnbull Funeral Home, we understand that there are special memories that need to be remembered and shared.
Andre's O'Neil &amp; Low is committed to providing you the best value for your insurance dollar. We are an agency built on integrity, offering personal service and sound advice you can trust. That's why we partner with experienced carriers like the Central Mutual Insurance Company for your auto, home, or business insurance needs. Central's quality insurance products are reasonably priced and backed by prompt, professional service, providing value for your peace of mind. Andre's O'Neil &amp; Low is your local central agent. Call us today at (419) 636-5050.
Things are pretty much business as usual here at Bryan Ford Lincoln. Our tax are providing the same high-quality service that everyone in Northwest Ohio expects. Our sales team is providing our customers with the best price on new and pre-owned vehicles. Everyone is focused on winning another President's Award from Ford. Yeah, pretty much business as usual. Oh, I guess there is one thing different. Stop out and see the all-new Bryan Ford Lincoln.
This is Dieter showing you the 2017 Ford Fiesta that has a final price of under $13,500 here at Darrell Shurkey Ford Lincoln. How did we get there? First, there's a $3,000 rebate from Ford. Add in the Darrell Shurkey employee discount of $681, bringing the final price of this Ford Fiesta to $13,469.
At Darrell Shurkey Ford Lincoln, everyone gets the employee discount on all-new Ford cars and trucks. Stop by and see how much you can save.
And we're back live here on the Q96.5 FM. And good to have all the candidates here for the Board of Education and with us right at this point in time. And we do have some amplification going all of a sudden, too. We sound now here like we're in a tunnel. That's okay. Works out well. Thanks to all the folks who are with us today. Thank you to the Union Street Grill today for the help and all the hospitality they're showing us today. Why don't you stop and have a little lunch before you get out of here today? Also, a big thank you yesterday to Stony Ridge Winery and then Seasons Coffee and Bistro that opened everything up on Tuesday. Hopefully, everybody's enjoying what we're doing right at this point in time. With that, Ron, do you have another question for these folks?
Sure. I guess I kind of want to know where we are financially. Everybody wants to know where their money is school-wise. I know we just passed an operating levy. Maybe the incumbents probably a little bit more knowledgeable about that. We'll start maybe down with Emily. Can you summarize where we're at with our budget? Do you anticipate, do we have another operating levy coming up?
We don't have an operating levy coming up at this time. One of the things that we have done during my tenure on the board is really stabilize our funding sources. The state of Ohio is really taking a hard look at pushing the responsibility for local education to the local areas, meaning we have to pay for it ourselves. They're giving us less funding as time goes on, generally speaking, and they've made that known. So one of the things, they're removing what they call the personal tangible property tax. Over a period of time, they're phasing that out. And so when we understood that that was going to be the case, a number of years ago, we passed the city income tax, and that was to supplement that loss. And at the time, it was about $3 million out of our budget. Let me put my glasses on and tell you exactly how much we're getting this year. Our personal property tax replacement for 2018 is estimated to be 1.7 million. So that was, and it's going to decline. And the amount that it declines is changed by the state every year. It's pretty frustrating to kind of hit a moving target. But that income tax piece really supplemented the emergency tax, the levy that you spoke of. That's a renewable every five years. We first passed it in 2002. We renewed it in '07, '12, and then again in 2017. And with that, again, we give the voters a chance to say, you know, that's not for more money. We've always come back for the same dollar figure. It's not inflation-adjusted. So with the combination of the income tax, the property tax, and the state aid, which is the foundation payments, they call it, we feel like we're in a pretty good financial condition. We just finished negotiations, which we think are fair, with our teachers and classified staff. And, you know, we want to be fair with them. We want to attract good staff. But we want to be fiscally responsible as well. That being said, going forward, based on our projections, we do have some deficit spending coming up, and those are the things that we'll need to watch. One of the things that our chief financial officer, Mr. Rossworm, has done an excellent job about is pinning down the forecasting so that it's very accurate and being very conservative on the budgeting side as far as our expenses, because we would never want to be surprised that there's more expenses than we anticipated. So those are things that we're going to continue to watch. But again, with that three-pronged approach about state funding, about local income tax, and local property tax, it kind of spreads the burden out. It's not all falling to the property owners. It's not all falling to the wage earners. So I think we're in good shape right now. And again, with the completion of the buildings, just moving in this year to the preschool to five building, one of the things that was required in that component was there was a half a mil in there for permanent improvement just for those buildings. So those buildings will have their own funding stream to continue to provide for the maintenance and upkeep of those new buildings.
Emily, being the finance person that she is, you talk about the different qualities that people bring to the table. Emily's strength clearly is that. Yeah. You know, one of the things, too, that makes it hard is that, you know, a little less than half of our funds are state funds. And the state operates in two-year fiscal cycles. And so in my time on the board, we're going through a new two-year fiscal cycle in budgeting now. But I think this is the third different funding calculation that they've given us in my four years I've been on the board. So what makes that really hard run, to be fair, is you never know where you stand, and it changes all the time. And so the hard part is, yeah, they're taking away tangible personal property tax replacement money, and they've gradually phased that out over time. But it's kind of like, one year they say, "Okay, we're, all right, we're cutting that off. It's gone." And then they kind of say, "Well, we're going to reduce that. We're going to give you some of it, but we're not going to give you all of it." And then it's, no, the next year, no, we're getting rid of it. No, we're serious this time. And you're like, "Okay, great." And then they say, "Well, we're going to give you 50% of what we gave you before." Okay. So you're always shooting at a moving target when it comes at. And that makes it hard. And to Emily's point, Rob does a fantastic job keeping us in the loop, keeping a five-year forecast that's very real. We do have some deficit spendings in our budgets going forward, and that's something we keep an eye on and work on on an ongoing basis. It's not something we look at in October and, is it May? It's October and May. We don't look at and then throw them away. I mean, that's something we continually are talking about. You know, the treasurer gives a report every meeting, every month.
Let me stay with you guys, if you would, and either Ryan or Emily, if you would. It's a point of great misunderstanding that there is a difference between construction funds and operating funds.
Correct.
Yeah. Can you guys summarize that in less than a half an hour?
Not really, no.
Quickly. I think, I just think that's a huge point of confusion, and I just want to give you a chance maybe to try to make the distinction there.
There's, according to fund accounting, there's two different pots of funds that we're allowed to pull from. One is PI funds, which are done for physical property maintenance and upkeep of our facilities, which is where the building funds, when we passed the levy for the bonds four years ago, that's where that went to. Those monies were then used and allocated to build the facilities. Operating monies are done just for that, for operating the school district, paying teachers, paying all our staff, as well as funding the different programs that we utilize throughout the school district. So there's two different pots of funds, and the allocation of the money that comes in from the auditor, from both our county auditor and state auditor, are allocated specifically for those purposes. And we're not allowed to really cross the streams, so to speak. To simplify, that's the best way I can simplify that discussion. I don't know, Emily?
I would just like to say, one of the things, when we met as a community, when we were talking about facilities, and this discussion began long before, four years ago when we passed the levy for the new schools, but one of the things that was important to the community and to the board was to stabilize the operating revenues. And again, that was the passage of the school district income tax, because that provides some stable revenues when maybe the property values were not holding value. So that really helped to stabilize the income portion. And again, what that pays for is teacher salaries, lights, you know, all the things that you need to just run the business. And the personal, and the, sorry, property, permanent improvement fund is separate. And also, during the time that I was on the board, when Mr. Gunner was the superintendent, he moved a portion of our millage to be specifically directed towards permanent improvement. And that's for things that last for five years or longer, including textbooks, chairs, tables, the buildings themselves. So we have been, for a while now, separating out so that we made sure that we had plenty of money to maintain our facilities and yet continue to be financially stable on the operating side of the house. So the community thought it was important, and we did that with the passage of that school district income tax to supplement the real estate tax in addition to the state foundation money to stabilize that operating side of the house before we came to the community again for the facilities and the bond issues.
All right, let's go to this side. This side's been kind of neglected for a little while. How's that, huh? If you talk to any educator, superintendent of schools, whoever it might be, wherever you might go, one of the problems that they've faced is we've had to educate our kids to take tests and pass tests, okay? What are your feelings on that situation in this community and this world that we live in, Mike? And is it something that needs to change?
Mike Stockman. I think we need to, you know, maybe just educate our kids more to where they learn more than just possibly teaching them to take tests. And sometimes I think maybe that's what we're doing, is just teaching them to take a test and not, you know, not really educate them fully, so.
Deb, you're a former teacher, so maybe your insight as to if that really did happen while you were around in this school and in the classroom, and how do we change that?
Well, you're absolutely right. The state legislature has told us how and when we'll measure students. You know, it's a tough thing in that they feel that they're doing their due diligence is to make sure that we are held accountable as a school. I understand that goal in mind. However, what I've seen personally is that any given test on a given day with a given student has so many factors involved, factors that we can't even maybe think about at the time. Did they get breakfast that day? And I know we've tried to, you know, communicate that with families, but, you know, emotionally, what's going on in the home. There's just so many factors with our students today that it's difficult to say that we dip that stick in, if you will, and actually measured where they are. I wish, with all my heart, that the state would think about the fact that local measures, whatever they may be, locally created measures frequently, would be such a much better measure of where our students are. And also, sometimes with the state testing, yes, we get numbers, massive amounts of numbers for the district, for individuals, for individual groups. It's hard to even fathom sometimes. But is that information really helping students in the way that teachers know what it is they need, that child needs? Yeah, they know they didn't pass item number three, but, you know, what does that individual student need? And I think that that's where it falls upon our teachers. And having been there, I do believe we have teachers that are doing that. So for us to communicate, though, with the public, when we see that state report card, you know, it causes us pause. It has to. But at the same time, I believe that it does not show a complete picture of students, a complete picture of staff, administrators. It's just too limiting. And how do we change it? Continue to talk that with people that are telling us how to do it, which is our legislatures.
Jim, Scott Benedict, you and I have actually talked about this a lot. And I think we, the state, the way they mandate, the way we test our kids is, in my view, not fair. I think they make it very difficult for the teachers and the administrators to have any continuity and reliability to even measure some of these things. My daughter Quincy has taken a different state test all four years that she's been in school. The state has changed the state test all four years. So I think that they, to make the teachers and the administrators and the staff teach to a test is not educating our kids. Our kids, I wrote a little bit about this in the Times article, but our kids all learn in different ways. And I know this personally, because Quincy is a very good student, but she learns in a different way. She's a visual and audio type of learner. And I think when you make the tests, the state tests, so, one of the things that I talked with Diana yesterday about was the fact that, you know, this state test is developed by a company, by a business. I mean, they're a business. There are no educators making up that test. And then to give it to them and say, "You've got to teach to this test to get this number, to get this gray card," I think's unfair. And I think there's a better way to do it, and I think the state needs to step up and be better at what they're legislating and making these local districts do. Because I know, when I go into these schools, and I know, and I know everybody sitting out there would agree with me, that our school district is not a D district. I mean, we have a great school district. Our graduation rates are up. I mean, we are producing great kids. And then for that report card to come out gives people pause to think, "Well, we just built all these new buildings, you know, and we got a D. How is that possible?" we just built all these new buildings, you know, and we got a D. How is that possible? It's not, it has, I think, nothing to do with our local administration, our local staff, and our students. It all has to do with the state and the way they, the way they do things. And I think it's unfair.
For Ryan and Emily, as you guys answer this thing, could you give us a little insight into what you as a board and maybe Diana and her staff have done recently to try to get our point across as well? Because I'm sure we're being proactive.
Ryan Miller. Yeah, Jim. You know, we have regular conversations with Diana, with Chad Bassett, who've done a lot of digging, calling around to other school districts in the area, trying to get a feel for where we're at. I know Ron, the Brian Times referenced an article that came out of the, I think it was the Cleveland Plain Dealer, that talked not only about the state testing, but the correlation between the state's results in free and reduced lunch percentages or income stream, income levels within communities. And the, the relationship's almost one-to-one when you look at that, which makes you sit there and look, wait a second, what are we really doing here? Are we being fair with students in our, in our state? The other thing you look at, and to Scott's point, I mean, in my four years on the board, we've had four different testing methods. And even in things such as, they release results to the community as this school report card, but I know we talked, I know Mr. Bassett informed us that one of the issues is, as you guys know, we've built new buildings, well, we reallocated grades amongst buildings. Classrooms are in different buildings now. Well, so what happened was, in certain of our grade levels, we had kids tested as elementary level, because those grades were part of the elementary building at one point in time, and now they're not. They're part of the high school building. So what do we get in those grade levels? Well, we get zeros, because those kids aren't in those grade levels in those buildings anymore. When you call the state and say, well, wait a second, this isn't right, they say, no, it'll, it'll work itself out in time. We're just going to publish this report card anyway. And you get a D. And you go, wait a second, that's not right or fair. And then they say, well, okay, so those kids should flow through to the other building, right? Well, no, because they weren't there last year. What? I mean, the results you'd get from the state are, and the answers we get from the state when we ask these questions and pose these questions are absolutely ludicrous, in my opinion. I've personally written and spoken with, with Mr. Height, who's our state senator. I've spoken with a new candidate who's looking at running against him simply on the educational platform, and spoken with him and traded messages with him about education, where he stands on it and where he thinks. And it's really driven by just this testing platform. Because as Mike said, we're teaching kids to take tests, and what's the point of that? I mean, we need to teach kids to make them the best we can make them, so that when they leave our school district, they're, they're ready to do real-world things, and they're the best person they can be when they walk out that door. And I think this testing program, frankly, in my opinion, as you heard in different school board meetings, is a joke. I think our teachers do a fantastic job. I think every person in our building comes to work every day giving 110%. And I couldn't be more proud of them for everything they do. I think the testing is ridiculous and needs huge changes or needs to go away.
Emily Ebaugh. I would agree with what you've all said, that the state requirements that are foisted upon us by ODE, or the Ohio Department of Education, are like trying to hit a moving target. State testing is big business, not just in Ohio, but across the country. And so those companies that win the contract to develop the test, to administer the test, to grade the tests, are making a lot of money at the expense of our children. The change has to be at the state of Ohio and the Ohio Department of Education. We've encouraged both Mrs. Savage as our superintendent, Mr. Rossworm as our CFO, to be involved and participate in the state-level organizations, they're professional organizations, the Buckeye Administration of School Administrators, or the Buckeye Association of School Administrators. And Mrs. Savage has had conversation with our state school superintendent, who came to the dedication and opening of our preschool to five building. But in one of the components of the most recent report card, 80% of the schools in Ohio received a D or an F. 80%. So you can't tell me that 80% of our schools are failing. There's not a great way to measure what they're doing. And the other thing that we have to look at is that, are we applying those, the, the testing standards equitably across our student population? There are some students that have great ability intellectually, that have great aptitude, that you know are going to do well no matter the form. There's other students that struggle, and they're measured with the same yardstick. And that's not helpful to them, because as, you know, many of the candidates here have said, students learn in different ways, in one test on one day. And, you know, maybe the kid had a bad dream last night, or, like you said, didn't eat breakfast. So to test them for one day and say that that's a measure of how our district is doing is, is not appropriate. So. And to Ryan's point, the, the, the chart that Mr. Bassett, who's our testing administrator, talked about, those, those school districts that receive an A, that received an A on this most recent report card, their median income in the household of those districts was $70,000. And it was straight down the line. I think the median income for those districts receiving a B was maybe like 55. And there was a direct correlation between wealth of the community and achievement on state standardized testing.
Interesting. Let's keep it right there. And we're going to go through a real quick question here, and then we're going to take a break, because we'll be at high noon. Whenever we do something like this, being Ron or myself, or probably Dan, if you're out in the grocery store, somebody says, hey, ask them about this. Ask them about the, my kid having to walk home from the new schools. Ask them about the, the traffic congestion at the high school, okay? And it got me thinking that, you know what, for my money, I don't know that that's a school board member's concern 100%, because that's more the administrative side. So my, my question right before the break, how does, what is the job of a school board member, from your perspective? What should you be involved with if you get this job?
This is Emily Ebaugh. And it's, it's a pretty simple answer. It's to set and administer policy, and to hire the superintendent and the CFO. That's pretty much it. And as a practical matter, we advise the superintendent and CFO, who are our direct employees, about issues that we see that the school district is facing, or some community input. But basically, our job is set and administer policy, and, and hire and fire the superintendent and treasurer.
Ryan Miller. I'd say ditto, but I'm guessing you want to hear a little more than that from me. Really, that's it. You know, to your point, Jim, I do get emails, phone calls, bumps about little things. And the biggest thing the board members need to do to make sure we stay out of those things is refer, refer those people to the right, to the right person to speak with. You know, the hot topic on Facebook this week was that we had replaced some of the banners in our gymnasium. And I've gotten emails and phone calls about that. And, you know, Mr. Ruffer is, is the one who's handled that. Have I asked him some appropriate questions to make sure I feel like he's handling it right? Yeah, I've talked to Mr. Ruffer directly. Do I think he's handling it right? Yes. So do I, but at the end of the day, it's not my job to intervene there. It's my job to point them to Mr. Ruffer to talk about that.
Thanks, Jim. Scott Benedict, I, as I said before, I'm a pretty good listener. And I think it's okay to listen to those comments, talk with people. But as Ryan said, then you direct them to the people that are actually in charge of those things. I mean, if it, if it is something with safety, you know, we would talk to the appropriate people about safety issues. If it becomes something that the board needs to change policy on, then we listen to that, and we discuss that and talk about it. But I think it's always good to listen to people, to take their concerns, and then get them to the appropriate people.
Yes. Deb Updike. I, I'm approachable. I continue to be approachable should I be elected to this board. I, I feel I am a listener, as I said before, wanting to consider the others' point of view. However, I don't see it as my role, should I be a board member, to be calling, you know, about the fact that someone didn't get the right lunch money back, or didn't get the right food item that they ordered. However, you know, perhaps that becomes a question just to, so how are things going in the cafeteria with things? As far as what I view as the thrusts that we should stick to as a board, it would be vision. What is our vision? Keep it student-focused. Let's, let's move forward towards that vision. Structure, my role as a board member would be to make sure that we provided a management system that would enable the staff and administrators to, to provide a high-quality education for students. And accountability, we, we need to monitor, you know, what's going on and look at reports. I would encourage you, if you have not, to go on the school website and look at a document there called the Bryan City Schools Quality Profile. And if you've had a chance to look at that, it really, I'm not sure who put all that information together or presented it, but it was, it's really a good view of what's going on in our schools. And I think that it's, it's worth your time to kind of look at that as far as accountability, and think about those things there. And then also advocacy. I think a board member, as a board member, I need to be an advocate for families and children. And that happens with strong partnerships through the schools. And then seeking resources, if there are grants available that we should be going after, pursuing, you know, anything that we can do to extend opportunities to all students.
Mike Stockman. I'm just running for school board, and it seems like I've already got people calling, asking questions and everything. And it's like, gee, you know, I'll let you know if I get elected. And, you know, it seems like people are already questioning. I could just imagine, if you are on the board, all the questions you're going to get and everything. But yeah, that's about it.
Very good. With that, it is just after 12 o'clock. That means we need to do an ID. This is WQCT, 96.5 FM, Bryan, Ohio. We have the 2017 Meet the Candidates session, the last half hour, with the Board of Education candidates, all being brought to you by 96.5 FM, Bryan Chamber of Commerce, Bryan Times, Andre's O'Neil &amp; Low, Mermaid Realty, the main stops of Northwest Ohio, Napa Auto Parts, Jay's Heating and Cooling, D&amp;M Service Center, and also Bryan Municipal Utilities. With that, we'll be back in two.
Looking for career opportunities? They're closer than you think. Northwest State has more than 70 degree and certificate programs, so you can start on the path to a rewarding career, or transfer your credits toward a bachelor's degree. Your future is knocking. What are you waiting for? Opportunities await at Northwest State Community College. Find out more at northweststate.edu.
They say there is strength in numbers. In Bryan, we have always taken pride in supporting our Golden Bear Student Athletes in all of their sporting endeavors. The Bryan Athletic Boosters now have a chance for you to get into the game. If you're Bryan Proud, it's time to become Bryan Strong. Whether you were a BHS athlete, are raising a BHS athlete, or just love supporting our Bryan High School athlete, this is your chance to be part of the BHS Sporting Community. Talk to any board member today on how easy it is to join, or contact us at 419-636-4536. At Krill Funeral Service, we are professionals with the sincere desire to reward every family who have placed their trust and confidence in us by being attentive to every detail, displaying the highest level of courtesy and compassion, and providing the greatest measure of respect for their wishes. As remembrance planners, our goal is to help families find joy in the way they choose to remember, honor, and celebrate the wonderful life of their loved one. Krill Funeral Service, we are experts at helping hearts heal.
You know, gathering with those we love, we get to catch up, and we get to reflect on the past.
It seems like every time we get together, I always learn something new.
Here's the front page of the Columbus Dispatch, winning one state baseball tournament, sliding into home plate.
Look at that, the front page. That's a neat picture.
That was a great memory. I'll never forget that.
At Oberlin Turnbull Funeral Home, we understand that there are special memories that need to be remembered and shared.
Andre's O'Neil &amp; Low is committed to providing you the best value for your insurance dollar. We are an agency built on integrity, offering personal service and sound advice you can trust. That's why we partner with experienced carriers like the Central Mutual Insurance Company for your auto, home, or business insurance needs. Central's quality insurance products are reasonably priced and backed by prompt, professional service, providing value for your peace of mind. Andre's O'Neil &amp; Low is your local central agent. Call us today at 419-636-5050.
Things are pretty much business as usual here at Bryan Ford Lincoln. Our techs are providing the same high-quality service that everyone in Northwest Ohio expects. Our sales team is providing our customers with the best price on new and pre-owned vehicles. Everyone is focused on winning another president's award from Ford. Yeah, pretty much business as usual. Oh, I guess there is one thing different. Stop out and see the all-new Bryan Ford Lincoln.
Darrell Shirkey Ford Lincoln's employee discount is available to everyone, and the savings on new Ford trucks is incredible.
I'm Dieter with Darrell Shirkey Ford Lincoln, showing you the brand-new 2017 Ford F-150 XLT. Has an MSRP of $42,040, with Ford rebates up to $5,250. With a Darrell Shirkey employee discount of $4,335, bringing the price of the truck to $32,455. And you'll save up to $10,000 on this truck.
Here are our last one, our last half an hour right now, as I'll turn everything over to Ron Osborne.
Thank you. We talked a little bit about how students learn differently. Some students are not interested in pursuing a college degree. Some may not even know it, because there's a lot of pressure, it seems like, to push kids into four-year degrees. I want to know what maybe you can do as a board, board members, to encourage more vocational education, more of those kinds of options, aside from traditional four-year college.
And I'm going to add to that, this is Dan Yerse. I'm going to add, we are hearing from major employers around town about needing people. And I'd like to hear what vision you might have on how we can get some of those students that are not going off to a four-year college, or involved in getting them into our workforce and staying here locally.
Let's start with Deb.
Well, I believe it was just in the last week, that, if you're a reader of the Bryan Times, which I hope everyone is, that there was a major push with the Manufacturing Day, I believe I'm terming that correctly. And I think that that is, that's where it needs to start. As much as possible that we can show students, expose them to, you know, maybe even some job shadowing-type activities, where they could go and, and see what, what goes on in the manufacturing world. I think in addition to that, when we talk about having a workforce-ready situation, it comes with also them learning how to work with others, how to be responsible, how to be timely, how to interact with a variety of people who will be there in that, in that location. And I think that comes many times at a very early age, if you will, even at preschool, where how are we going to get along with our fellow man? And then as far as, you know, moving on, Four County, you know, what a phenomenal district or school system, school availability that is, you know, it's, it's changed. But I think that as a school district, we need to continually communicate that with families and with students. And I know what you mean. I, just recently, with a student that I'm aware of, you know, the father was not in favor of Four County. He felt that that option for his student would be saying, well, he's not good enough. But if, if we can begin to communicate and show examples of how that is not the case, and students have strengths, I know within my own family, with our children, you know, we, it's, it's just a fact of life, that we're all individuals, and we all bring different strengths. And all of those can be very, very important employability skills, if we develop them and take the time to do that.
Yeah, thanks, Ron. Scott Benedict. That's one of the things I talked about, was that I think our new schools have now the opportunity to provide some expanded curriculum. But one thing I do want to mention, and Deb mentioned it as well, is that we have a great relationship with Four County. They, they are doing a fantastic job. Tim Meister is just a great leader out there. He has taken, I think, that stigma away from when I was go, when I was in high school of, as Deb said, oh, you've got to go to Four County, you're not good enough to go to the high school, to go college prep. That is going away. And I think they're doing a very good job, and I wouldn't want to step on their toes of what they're doing. I think we do have the opportunity here with our new buildings to expand some of our curriculum, maybe in the communication and technology side, computer skills, even just communication. maybe in the communication and technology side, computer skills, even just communication skills. I think communication skills probably is one of the number-one things that these kids have got to learn as they go out into the workforce, because if they can't communicate, they have a hard road ahead of them. But I think we are doing a good job with our school here, getting kids who are ready to go to college, getting college classes offered to them as well. So I think you've got to look at both sides, the kids that are, that are advanced learners, and those that want to go into a vocation and go to work right away. I think it's important for us to work on both of those things. I talked with Diana yesterday, an example that she gave me is that we have this VCT class here at Bryan High School, which is Video Communication Technology, and they have expanded that now into a, what's called Golden Bear Photo. And they have had an outsourced company taking photographs for the school system, and they now have brought that in-house and are teaching these kids to run it as a business. So that right now, it's fairly teacher-led, but by the end of next, this year, and going into next year, it'll be more student-led, where you will have a business manager, you'll have a photo editor, you'll have a communications director, you'll have an advertising. So they are actually creating a small business model within our, in the school system as a class, and I think that's a terrific 21st century thing. So I think we're doing great. Thanks.
Ryan Miller. You know, we began about a year ago, a program called Career Explorations for many of our kids as young as sixth grade. And we do, another thing to think about is we do JA. JA starts now, I think, in, is it first grade or kindergarten? I can't remember. First grade, many JA sessions with a lot of the local business people in the community come in to teach JA in our schools. The other thing is we do Career Explorations, which now is in sixth grade, I think last year was taught in seventh grade, where kids are frankly introduced to different careers, different opportunities, different businesses that exist and can be something as an opportunity for each one of those kids. I know my son was in that class last year and came home and told me he wants to be a carpenter. And I said, great, I'm glad that's what you want to do. You know, how do we educate you to be the best carpenter we can be so that when you leave Bryan schools, you are ready to be a carpenter? Fort County has been a great partner of Bryan City Schools for a long time. I do agree, at one point in times, there were certain negative stigmas that went along with Fort County, and I think Mr. Meister, Mr. Hoopy, and many of the people there have done a great job directing their programs, partnering with Northwest State, partnering with others, giving real productive, meaningful programs to a lot of kids. As far as the school is concerned, I think our objective is to provide them those opportunities, to introduce them to those opportunities. I don't think we can push them that direction. I think that's each kid, each parent, each family's right to know what that kid wants to do, or what he or she wants to be when they grow up. You know, I think we provide them the opportunities, and with our new schools, and as Scott said, VCT, some of our art programs, some of our other educational programs, I think gives us a lot of opportunity, and also with things such as online schooling that has grown. Online schooling is, is growing in leaps, by leaps and bounds, and we facilitate online programs for many of our kids. College Credit Plus programs, where our kids take college courses, even in high school, where they can learn more and more and more every day to make them ready, whether it be through an associate's degree, through whatever degree. I think the key for many of our employers, Dan, to your point, is just making sure that they're involved and they're a voice inside our school district's ears, voice to your board members, voice to Diana Savage, voices to Mark Rary or to Karen Cox, and talk to them about, hey, is this something we can add into your curriculum, or something we can talk about? And I think that's the key. I really do.
Emily Ebaugh. One of the things that we can do as a board level, and that we do do, is we have a Business Advisory Committee where we invite local business leaders in to come and share their concerns about what's going on. We use that forum to inform the local business leaders about what we're doing, and we ask for their input about what we can do better. We've started an initiative for a Work-School Partnership, where students can go out into the community and work at a business for maybe a semester and say, I'm going to love working at Spangler Candy, and this is a job that I didn't even know that they had, or I'm going to go to Bard Manufacturing, because I didn't even know that these kind of professions were available there. We have CEO Wednesday, where the students at the junior and senior level can come in and practice interviewing skills. We have, again, our Fort County Career Center is excellent. They worked with local businesses to find out what their opportunities are. And with the Career Readiness Program starting as early as seventh grade, that's really getting kids to think about what else is out there. They don't even know in sixth and seventh grade what the opportunities are. I think lawyer, doctor, teacher, you know, there's so much more to that. And again, with the technology available in our schools, the video technology, technology used in art, engineering, you know, graphic design, even in injection molding, things like that, that, that all of this technology is going to help those students excel in their chosen field, and we need to continue to develop those partnerships with local businesses to find out what their needs are, and try and match up those students that have similar interests. And Mark Rary and Steve Osbaugh have both done a great job in reaching out to local community business leaders, and factory owners, and business owners to say, we want to know what you need, and we want to help you provide the correct workforce that you need.
Can I, Scott? One last point, that, in what we're doing to help in that fashion, is that we're also, Bryan sends more kids to Fort County than any of the other schools that participate at Fort County.
All right, it's kind of time for the Daily Double here, guys. How's that? Two questions, I think they have relatively short answers, but they can kind of go together. First, what's your position on drug testing students to take part in extracurricular activities? And secondly, with all the violence around the world, is it time to start thinking about putting someone in our schools that has an arm, whether it's a faculty member or somebody else? And Deb, start with you.
Wow. Two biggies. Two biggies, yes. Well, you know, drug testing with students, I believe that, you know, we need to have a method by which is, is fair, is randomly testing at times. We can't risk, you know, the safety or the health of our children, whether they're in extracurriculars, from athletics to drama to music. We need to, as a school, do what we can within the legal limits of doing that, and consider what the options are. And then, of course, also, beginning to think about what is the policy to deal with things that may turn up in that respect. As far as guns in schools, I, you know, I feel that we need to consider safety of our students, staff, at all times. I respect people that have carry concealed permits. That is certainly their privilege and their right to do what they need to do to carry that weapon. I, I just don't know that if I feel that having a teacher with that responsibility, or an administrator with that responsibility. Some school districts have gone to safety officers with law enforcement, providing that. Again, I'm not suggesting that that's what we must look at at Bryan, but I believe I would tend to be more thinking that would be a better option personally.
Yeah, Jim, thanks. Scott Benedict. The drug testing issue, I think, is, is a local policy that was developed by the board after years and years and years of research, I think over 10 years. And in speaking with Diana Savage, our superintendent, yesterday, one of the things that I found very interesting was that she told me that, because I asked her the question, how did the, who was the driving force behind this? And initially, six, eight, 10 years ago, it was, it was a different group, but recently, prior to it becoming a local school board policy, was it was the students. Many of the students came to the administration and asked them to do this because it gave them that one more reason to say no. I mean, they were trying to, you know, the peer pressure obviously is there, and they use that as a way to avoid that peer pressure. Can't do it. I won't be able to play sports. And I think so, that that was a very responsible thing for those students to do, and I think it's a good policy. I don't have a problem with it. As for the guns in schools, you know, it's, it's just amazing that we, you even have to talk about guns in schools. I certainly, if we could avoid it at any cost, I would certainly not want to have guns in schools. Having said that, I've seen now instances where it has helped, when there has been an active shooting situation and someone has been armed in the school, whether that's a law enforcement person or someone trained, even if they are an educator or an administrator. I would only say that they would need to be fully trained and able to take on that responsibility, because it's a, it's like sitting in the exit seat on an airplane. If you're not willing to open that door, you need to move. So I guess if they're willing to take that on, for the safety of our children, that's, that would be my main priority, would be the safety. So I'd like to keep them out, but if it was something that we needed to look at, I'd be willing to look at it.
Ryan?
Thanks, Jim. Ryan Miller. Yeah, actually, I was on, I was on the board when we instituted the drug testing, and I do support that. There was a committee, as Scott alluded to, that included students, parents, a couple board members, some administrators, that came together and talked about, we're thinking about doing this, and gets, you know, let's get some feedback from everybody on it, and it was very well-supported, like you said, Scott, by the students. You know, I do think we need to be very cautious of drugs and the prevalence of wrongfulness. You know, we had some research that came from Williams County Health Department that indicated there was a rise in use of drugs in our county, and there was a rise in use of those things, and so if there's things that we can do to help prevent that, or help our children avoid those pitfalls, why not? Why not help them? And so I think that was something that, that I think came out of that, that thought process, and really was born out of a lot of those discussions, and I think we've done a very nice job of it. I think we've had a very low incidence rate, which, through the testing program, which has been very pleasant to me, and I think we've, we've been very, very happy with the results that we've gotten through that, through that process and program. As far as guns in the school, I do not support guns in the school. In my opinion, there's too many things that can go wrong, and not enough that can go right in that. Do I think that there are incidents in the United States, and could there be an incident in Bryan, Ohio? Be naive to say you know, that couldn't happen. It certainly could. But I just feel like we put more kids at risk, and more kids at exposure to violence by having violence in the school, by saying we're going to, we're going to deter violence by this way, and I'm just, I don't feel strong, I don't feel strongly enough that we deter whatever negative could happen by instituting that in our school district.
Emily Ebaugh. As far as the drug testing, I was also, obviously, on the, on the board as we implemented that drug testing policy, and some of the things that we looked at, certainly extracurriculars are a privilege, they're not a right, and to be able to enjoy that privilege, they need to be able to hold themselves to a bit higher standard, to say, I want to do this, and these are the sacrifices I'm willing to make. And sometimes extracurriculars for students are just that added incentive that they need to make sure their grades are good, to make sure that they're clean, to make sure they're not using alcohol inappropriately. The point of our testing program is not for punishment, but it's really for prevention and to offer an opportunity for a student to get help if that's what they need. So I'm definitely in favor of the drug testing program, as Ryan has said, I will reiterate that, is that I've been very pleased with how that's turned out. As far as an armed staff in our school, one of the things I'm, I'm happy about with our new facilities is we have a lot better opportunity to provide security for our students. When we had five buildings, you know, we were wide open if there had been any kind of incident. So the controlled access in our buildings has been a huge benefit to our new facilities. We work closely with local law enforcement for training, for, you know, active shooter scenarios, so I know that they use our buildings at times to do some training. Education of our staff is another probably key component to, if you see something, say something. You've heard that, that kind of expression, that our staff are going to be the best deterrent to, to a problem. So, and making sure that they know that they have an opportunity to address any concerns that they have with our, with our administration. So at this time, I don't think, and I hope, we never come to the point where we need armed staff.
Very good. All right, that's going to wrap up the questions. We're going to take one last break. When we come back, we'll get closing comments from everyone. 2017 Meet the Candidates here on the Q, 96.5 FM.
Looking for career opportunities? They're closer than you think. Northwest State has more than 70 degree and certificate programs, so you can start on the path to a rewarding career, or transfer your credits toward a bachelor's degree. Your future is knocking. What are you waiting for? Opportunities await at Northwest State Community College. Find out more at northweststate.edu.
They say there is strength in numbers. In Bryan, we have always taken pride in supporting our Golden Bear Student Athletes in all of their sporting endeavors. The Bryan Athletic Boosters now have a chance for you to get into the game. If you're Bryan proud, it's time to become Bryan strong. Whether you were a BHS athlete, are raising a BHS athlete, or just love supporting our Bryan High School athlete, this is your chance to be part of the BHS Sporting Community. Talk to any board member today on how easy it is to join, or contact us at 419-636-4536. As the baby boomer generation tires of traditional send-offs, funerals are becoming increasingly more personalized. People are pre-planning their own remembrance gathering. Pre-planning is easy, and will pay off both emotionally and financially for you and your family. Plus allows you more control over your last hurrah. At Krill Funeral Service, we're not just funeral directors, we are experts at helping hearts heal.
You know, gathering with those we love, we get to catch up and we get to reflect on the past.
It seems like every time we get together, I always learn something new.
Here's the front page of the Columbus Dispatch 21 State Baseball Tournament, sliding into home plate.
Look at that, the front page. And that's a neat picture.
That was a great memory. I'll never forget that.
At Oberlin Turnbull Funeral Home, we understand that there are special memories that need to be remembered and shared.
Andre's O'Neil &amp; Low is committed to providing you the best value for your insurance dollar. We are an agency built on integrity, offering personal service and sound advice you can trust. That's why we partner with experienced carriers like the Central Mutual Insurance Company for your auto, home, or business insurance needs. Central's quality insurance products are reasonably priced and backed by prompt, professional service, providing value for your peace of mind. Andre's O'Neil &amp; Low is your local central agent. Call us today at 419-636-5050.
Things are pretty much business as usual here at Bryan Ford Lincoln. Our tax are providing the same high-quality service that everyone in Northwest Ohio expects. Our sales team is providing our customers with the best price on new and pre-owned vehicles. Everyone is focused on winning another President's Award from Ford. Yeah, pretty much business as usual. Oh, I guess there is one thing different. Stop out and see the all-new Bryan Ford Lincoln.
Hi, I'm Dieter Held, here to tell you a little bit about the Darrell Shirkey Ford Lincoln Employee Discount. This is a Ford Escape S Package with an MSRP of $24,495. Ford is offering a $3,500 rebate on this Escape. And here's where the Darrell Shirkey Employee Discount comes into play. It takes an additional $1,476 off the price of the Escape, bringing the total to $19,519.
How much can Darrell Shirkey's Employee Discount save you? The only way you'll know is to stop by and see us.
Up our session here now, with final statements from our potential candidates here for the Board of Education. And Deb, why don't we start with you?
Thanks, Jim. First of all, I would just like to thank the current school board for doing the hard, heavy work that was involved, and the inside of taxpayers who have provided us with two amazing buildings, our brand-new high school, middle school, and our refurbished elementary building. I do believe that now, it's the responsibility of this school board to ensure that these wonderful assets are utilized to their fullest potential for the benefit of all students. I look forward to the possible opportunity to serve as a board member, serving both the community and the school. board member, serving both the community and the school. I believe my experience as an educator has prepared me to work with fellow board members, with my vote at all times being in the best interests of the children of Bryan City Schools. I'll use my skills as a communicator to listen to the community we serve and to ask questions in the interest of getting facts. I see one important role as a board member, should I be elected, is for me to build public support and understanding of public education. And to do that by engaging families and the community of Bryan. And together, we can work to make this great school district an even better district. I would thank those here today, Q96.5, the Bryan Times, Bryan Chamber, and BMU for the opportunity to share a little bit about myself and also respond to your questions. Thank you for that opportunity in this forum. And to the voters that are listening or watching, I appreciate your consideration during either early voting or on November 7. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Scott Benedict. And I'd like to reiterate what Deb said, to thank the current school board. They've done a fantastic job. You know, if, I think, if Glenn would not have stepped down, none of us probably would be here today. But having said that, I think that, you know, it's an important aspect for our community to have a good, solid school board, to continue, you know, with the fiscal responsibility that I think is a major part of that, to continue to set excellence for our student performances, and to communicate. We talked about that earlier, but I think communication is a big part of that. I think the school board serves as a link between the schools and the public, and I hope to be a part of that. I think being on the school board is going to allow us to continue to set the educational goals and establish policy for our school system. And again, as I said before, to maybe expand our curriculum and to move these kids into the 21st century with the technology, the new buildings and the campuses that we have. And I would appreciate your vote, and thank you for having this forum.
Ryan Miller, also want to echo, thank you. Thank you to everyone in attendance here and on TV and on the radio who take the time to be very serious about this election. You have five fantastic candidates. I'm going to have a hard time deciding myself who I'm going to vote for. The reality is, I think, as a school board member, it's been a challenging but well-run four years. Fiscally, the school board and the school district, I should say, are in a very solid financial situation. Very glad to have represented our voters for the last four years and look forward to representing everybody for the next four years. I think that now that we've spent a lot of time making these buildings a reality, that we will use those buildings to the fullest going forward to provide the best education, the best plans, the best that we can every day for each and every one of those students that come through that door, students that are there today and students that'll be there for years to come. Thank you very much.
Emily Ebaugh. I would again thank you, gentlemen, for this opportunity to really clarify why I want to run again. You know, it's been, obviously, an interesting few years. So I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to continue to serve for another four years. We've got excellent facilities. We've got excellent staff. Our financial position is good. We're going to continue to work on our communication. We're going to continue to work with our community. We're going to work with them to help them enjoy these great new facilities, to prepare our students for 21st century. And we just think that, I think, that we've got a great school system. And I think that Bryan City Schools is going to be well-served by any of the candidates that are here today.
Very good. That'll wrap it up for us. It's been a busy week. I really want to thank Dan Yerres and the Chamber of Commerce for helping us put all this together. Ron Osborne with the Bryan Times, without you, buddy, we couldn't have pulled that off. Maybe we can do it again next year?
We will. Thank you.
No doubt. A big thank you to the folks that hosted us today, the Union Street Grill, the Stony Ridge Winery yesterday, and also Seasons Coffee and Bistro. A big thank you to Eric Herman and his staff at Bryan Municipal Utilities for producing all of these. And don't forget that if you missed any of these, we had a couple of little glitches here and there. If you missed a portion of them even, they'll be up on their Facebook page and also on their YouTube page, so Bryan Municipal Utilities. We'll also link some things over to our radio page here as we go as well. And finally, a big thank you to Andy Briggel and Courtney Elizabeth back at the studio who have been making sure this is all working on their end. And our sponsors, Andre's O'Neil &amp; Low, Mermaid Realty, the main stops of Northwest Ohio, Napa Auto Parts, Jay's Heating and Cooling, D&amp;M Service, and again, one more time, Bryan Municipal Utilities. With that, folks, good luck in the election and thank you and good luck. And again, thank you for your time in office for Ryan and Emily. And good luck for everybody else. One last thing that we'll point out, Mike had to leave, Mike Stockman. You didn't hear a closing remarks from Mike. He had to get back to work. So he, that's the reason that he was not here for a closing remark at that time. With that, we'll send it back to the Q with classic hits on 96.5 FM.